Good evening, I would like to bring the March 22nd, 2018 meeting of the Intermedia Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Foyle, will we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Foyle. Mr. Harris.
Present.
Mrs. Varekio.
Present.
Ms. Joseph. Ms. Bernauer.
Here.
Mr. McGarvey. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Chabon.
Here.
Mr. Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Evans, can we have a little bit of question here?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interbar school district. And grant to this board in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others, of others. All this we ask in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, we do. First up, we have Mr. Jordan Doby.
At the financing GBO meeting, during the, at the end, Mr. Phelps, you mentioned that they were going to have an executive session. And then you said, two words, legal matters. Now, so, this is an issue that keeps cropping up every once in a while. So, an executive session that you hold, you have to give a reason, this is from the sunshine, put out by the state. It's been mentioned a number of times at a number of meetings. But if you hold an executive session, you have to have a reason that this must be specific. If you have litigation, it has, you have to name the parties, the docket number, the court in which it is filed, and none of these things are being followed by this, by you as a Board of School Directors. Now, I know that you want to make these things streamlined, but these are, you know, maybe there are some people who are interested, you know? I was interested in finding out that you were spending $5,000 in legal fees for someone who, at the last month's meeting, you approved for spending $75,000 for their education, of which $5,000 went for legal fees. I mean, that's an awful lot of money for educating someone. Now, also at the-
That was at the public meeting.
Pardon?
That was at the public meeting.
That's correct. You proved that-
I wasn't at the executive.
No, 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 I'm referencing the fact that it was, that I asked a question about it and you, you referenced, and you gave that information. That's, that's what I was asking. You know, you made that available, so that was, that was acceptable. And the, so that is something I think you need to address. Also, the solicitors. When the solicitor comments are very brief, I mean, you know, they're not very specific. And, you know, there is, there needs to be more information given. Mr. Varekio, at the last month's meeting, leave a little bit of better description of what's going on with you as the solicitor and the things that you're representing to the school district here. Well, this tax assessment is that you're settling tonight. Is this a reduction in their assessment or increase?
It is a reduction.
A reduction. So, there's going to be a loss of some money to the, the school district. Also, at the, at the workshop meeting, the, it was mentioned for the first time by Mr. Evans about the airport agreement. And I've asked my representatives from tenement township, my Ms. Bernauer and Ms. Joseph, to read that agreement. I asked Ms. Varekio to read that agreement, specifically the-
Mr. Doby, just so you know, everybody on this board has that airport agreement. Everybody is reading it, looking at it, pondering their route. It is being looked at.
Well, it's, it's not, the time for pondering and reading it is over. You need, you're losing money at the rate of $2,000 a day. You, you mentioned at the finance committee meeting that, quote, "We are financially tied." Mr. Evans talks about the financial condition of the school district. Well, here's the money that you could recover by renegotiating that portion, number three.
That is your thoughts, yes.
That's what you can do.
That's your thoughts.
No. That's why I'm bringing it up. That's why I bring it up at the meetings. Losing that kind of money is, should be a problem for you because you continue to raise our taxes since that agreement was agreed to in April of 2015, and the first payment was made on September the 1st of 2015. You have been losing that money, and you have raised our taxes more than 10 percent. You're going to raise our taxes again this, this year. So, it needs to be brought up. You need to go forward and petition-
Mr. Doby not to cut you off, right?
Well, I'm just going to finish with that. Petition the township and the county and recover that, adjust that fee for that taxes according to the tax rate, and recover that money and use it towards the education of the children.
Thank you, Mr. Doby.
Next, we have Ms. Phyllis Floyd.
Yes. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay. I wasn't at the last couple of meetings, so I listened to the audio and also the video of meetings. And at the February 5th GBO meeting, Mr. Galloway gave a description of a problem that was out there. And he emphasized that it's going to be in-house excavation, okay? And I believe in-house electrician was going to do the work, and repair would be in about, should be done in about two weeks from that date. And then, Mr. Phelps made-
I don't think that was correct.
That's what I heard.
We weren't going to do it in-house. I can tell you now because that's three-phase electric we were hiring.
No.
That is three-phase electric. We were not doing that ourselves, I can tell you. We had no intentions, no plans.
Work is stated in-house.
No, it may have been dug, or, you know, dug up, something like that in-house, but we were not doing any of the electrical work ourselves.
Did it go after bid?
Yes, it did. Got quotes.
That's what it was.
Three or four actual.
And when did the board approve that? Because I didn't see or, you know, as discussion was discussed.
You'd have to go back and look at the meeting. Yeah. First act after the one.
And the board had it as a resolution and approved it?
Didn't need to be.
The person?
It didn't need to be a resolution.
Why not? If it, it was a bid to accept the bid.
It was-
It was emergency work.
Uh, who ended up getting the job, too?
Was Goldmark?
Yeah, Goldmark Electric.
Okay. Um, one more.
Actually, it's on the agenda tonight.
How would I know? Did you look at the agenda?
To the bills, Mr. Doby.
Yeah. It's like something.
I mistake, I look itself.
It's not aligned by much.
Yeah.
Okay, on March 5th, the electric was restored. It was reported at the GBO meeting. And, um-
And just so you know, we were waiting for PICO.
I, I heard it.
We were-
I heard the delay was because PICO had to shut it down.
Right.
Because there was live wires.
Yes.
You know, I heard the whole description.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, anyway, suggestion was made, um, that going to administrative, like talking to administrators about certain things, and Mr. Evans turned around and said, "More members go through superintendent, do not go directly to administrators." And again, courtyard came off by Mr. McGarvey, and it seemed like Mr. Evans was a little puzzled about what Mr. McGarvey was talking about when we've been talking about this for several years.
He wasn't puzzled at all, Mrs. Floyd.
Well, the questions that he was asking, listen to, listen to it. All right? Because Kevin tried to sit there and explain it all to him.
Mr. Evans is only aware of the courtyard.
Well, it seemed all the questions that he was asking and Kevin having to explain it, just-
Kevin does not have to explain anything to Mr. Evans, I'm sure.
Well, that particular situation, he did, if he was into the tape, you would hear that. And then, he made the comment, Mr. Evans made the comment, and I'd like to see that this board has a charter to deal with only the superintendent, not administrators. And Mr. Evans doesn't feel it is necessary to speak to administrators. The only authority that school board members have is at meetings, not outside of the meetings. Where did he come up with that?
May I respond to just that last?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
It's in the school board policy.
Really?
Hmm.
That the board does not have any authority?
No member of the board has any authority outside the public meeting of the board.
No authority to make a decision or anything?
No authority.
That's wrong.
So, you say-
Check the code!
Like-
The code supersedes the policy.
Okay, I'm not debating it with you.
Code supersedes, you don't have to debate. I was on the board for 12 years.
Mrs. Floyd, wrap it up, please.
Okay. And, which leads me up to, uh, I'm sorry. Which leads me up to, how come, can somebody enlighten me as to why three, four members in particular stay behind after every meeting, I meets with the superintendent?
What are you telling me, Mrs. Floyd?
After every meeting, you, Mr. Chabon, and Mr. Evans, usually for at least 45 minutes, stays in-
Mrs. Floyd, that isn't why.
May I respond to that?
Because I believe you're five minutes after this meeting.
Really?
Yes.
How come people have seen, your car, has seen you?
That is a lie, Mrs. Floyd.
Really?
I'm telling, yes.
Very professional, thank you.
I'm telling you, that's an out-and-out lie.
I'm not lying.
Yes, you are.
No, I am not.
That's what you were saying.
You don't go into the superintendent's office before or after and have-
I'm not saying I don't go in her office, but I go in, we do whatever, and I leave in five minutes.
No.
Yes.
There are other people that have seen you.
Who is there, people watching you, Mrs. Floyd?
Yeah, there's still you.
Just checking.
May I respond to that as well?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Evans.
I think, I don't think there's any, anything that precludes that taking place. I think it's okay to socialize, it's okay to chat, it's okay to meet and confer. It's just not okay to deliberate. And frankly, I enjoy the superintendent's company, and Mr. Phelps, and Mr. Chabon, and I hate some to say that, did anybody ever hang in the parking lot well past the end of the meeting and chat? Did anybody ever sit in somebody else's car and chat? Does anybody ever stay behind in the parking lot and chat over what they learned in the meeting? I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I really don't. And I don't think, we have to explain it to any member of the community.
You don't have to explain anything because you do what you damn well please.
And, and when you were on the board for 12 years, did you ever stay behind after a meeting?
Not in a pow-wow with the superintendent.
Pow-wow.
I would be in the room with everybody and anybody else. No other board members were excluded.
Did any other board members ever do that, like the past president of the board? Did he ever stay behind?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of.
All right, let's wrap this up. This is nonsense.
That's good.
Let's get it moving.
Well, I just think that transparency, transparency is going-
Let me tell you, we're super transparent, I can even begin to tell you.
Really?
Yes.
Really?
All right, Mrs. Floyd, thank you. All right, moving on here.
Mrs. Donna France.
Mrs. France.
I just had two quick questions. First, a comment. I know Mrs. Foyle is not here this evening. I was, I had seen on the agenda that she is resigned from her position, and I just wanted to say thank you to her for her time and contributions to the board, and I'm sorry to see her gap, and hopefully we can find somebody to push you. And then, the only other comment or question that I have, and solely because he's been around a long time and was here when I went to school here, is item on a 10-point point, Kenneth Mobley, long-term sub-German teacher. Is Mr. Mobley certified in German?
No.
No, he's not, but under, but under long-term subs and not being able to find anybody in case of an emergency, we can use someone without that certification.
Oh, okay. But how would we teach, like against?
There was a lot of support from the administrative team in pulling plans and things together to try and make the classes as productive as possible.
Because I know you might do this with other language classes.
Yes. Unfortunately, they're hard to find, long-term subs to build.
So, I guess my other question would just be, and I look back, where is the teacher that was teaching the class? Where is the German teacher?
That's a personnel action.
Oh, because I didn't see, I didn't see resignation, I didn't see-
No. It's a personnel issue, and the information will come up at a future board meeting.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. France.
And that's it, sir.
That's it. All right. All right, moving on to number five, Mr. Evans.
Motion that the following minutes, the regular meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors held on February 21st, 2018 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all there is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Uh, this, sir, go ahead, Mr. Doby. Solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. This month, our office has been assisting the school district with review of contracts with individual special education issues as well as professional development and with tax assessment appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to number seven, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven, motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending February 28th, 2018 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all there is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Seven point two, the fund disbursements in the amount of $4,092,112.61 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all there is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Is there any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Mr. Evans, if we could just read the number again on that statement, they, I thought it sounded funny, but I'm not sure. Can you just make sure it's correct? $4,092,000?
$1,112.61.
$112.61.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And sixty-one cents.
$112.61.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you.
Moving on, is there any correspondence?
No, sir.
Moving on to number nine, committee reports. Just so you know, I forgot to mention it, our kids are in the play tonight. That's why we don't have our student address. Mr. Chabon, nine point one, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Finance committee met on Monday, March 5th, 2018. First item on the agenda was the Capital One Commercial Card Program presentation by Ms. Robin Madsen. Ms. Madsen explained to the board about potential rebate opportunities by partnering with Capital One. These potential rebates could provide some additional revenues to the district at no cost. The partnership would include using a procurement card for accounts payable through Capital One, which means Capital One will work with the business office to find ways to maximize efficiencies and maximize our rebates. There's an agenda item tonight which the board will vote to move forward with this opportunity. The second item discussed was the 2018-2019 preliminary budget. Mr. High School reviewed the preliminary budget and highlighted the differences compared to the preliminary budget from February meeting. I'm going to highlight some of that information. Overall, our budget saw an increase in its revenue by $437,937. This increase is mainly from state revenue through increases in basic education and special education funding per the proposed state budget. In terms of our expenditures, we actually saw an increase in the expenditures by $186,297. Most of the increases in expenditures was due to increases to the special education budget by $222,800 due to special education settlements and special education tuition. Some of the reductions in expenditures included reducing the DCIU line item by $15,142 because of the decreases in special education contracts and competitive employment and academy services, reducing $21,992 from the federal grants line item because of adjustments in salary and benefits. Overall, we were able to decrease the deficit by $251,640. The current budget deficit sits at $818,063, adding 3% tax increase. As the tax increase goes down, the deficit increases. A 0% tax increase would have us sitting at approximately a $2 million deficit. Mr. High School, Mrs. Riley, and the board will continue to work this month to reduce the deficit as much as possible while maintaining the necessary supports for our students and staffs. Finally, the preliminary financial statements were discussed. All board directors had opportunities to read the monthly department spending, year-to-date revenues, and year-to-date expenditures and ask questions. The committee adjourned, and our next meeting will be April 9th at 7:00 PM in the Board of the Administration Board. That is it for the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. And nine point two, the GBO, Mr. Evans.
Solicitor, a meeting commenced at 7:08 PM. Meeting began with questions from the committee regarding follow-up information on a facility assessment that had been conducted and what projects should or could be pursued in the near term, as well as where we could look for funding. Director of Facilities, Mr. Galloway, recommended a few projects from the assessment that could be undertaken utilizing in-house resources. One of those projects would be the rekeying of all facility doors. This would standardize the type of lock sets used as well as eliminate concern for unauthorized access by previous key holders. As stated previous, the committee does not want to lose track of initiatives mentioned in this study, especially those dealing with life safety and those that are listed as a priority. Mr. McGarvey raised concern about other projects in his assessment that he felt needed immediate attention, in particular, the courtyard at the admin building. We, as a committee, need to explore funding possibilities to accomplish some of the more costly initiatives. Mr. Galloway informed the committee that electrical repairs at South Avenue Sports Complex have been completed. He also mentioned that he is having a storage container placed at the complex to alleviate some of the storage concerns at that location. Superintendent Riley provided a proposal from a school safety consulting service, Emergency Training Solutions LLC, that would conduct a security assessment of the district facilities as well as training for staff. It was recommended that the item be moved forward. Dr. Ekman provided an update on the Title IV programs regarding how the funds were being used as well as proposed user expenditures, which included Uglali's enhanced music program, Ozobots for beginning programmers, STEM building kits, a weighted keyboard for the high school music program, and AP environmental science startup course materials. Meeting was adjourned at 7:54 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Legislative in Delaware County is Mr. McGarvey, who has had a family emergency tonight, so he couldn't make it. He will give that report in the next meeting. Nine point five, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on March 14th, 2018. Approved the appointment of Meredith Adams to as the DCIU Director of Early Education, Childhood Education, and Special Ed, effective date April 2nd, 2018. Approved to submit the DCIU early head start, head start continuation funding application for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Approved the 2019, 2018, 2019 early head start, head start and special program calendars. Approved the following, the 28, oh, let's try this again. Approved the following, 2018, 2019 budgets for the circulation to the districts for actions. In accordance with the state law, the votes of these budgets require an affirmative affirmation vote of the two-thirds by the members of the districts. Intermediate Unit General Operation Budget, Special Education Budget, and the Delaware County Educational Funding Grant. For more news and information, go to DCIU.org. That's all I have here.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Moving on to nine point six, Mr. Chabon, the audit committee.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. All board members were provided with a copy of the audit on Monday, March 19th, to read and review. The audit committee held a phone conference tonight with majors and masters at 5:00 PM. Some of the highlights from the 2016-2017 audit include no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses related to the financial statements. There was one material finding for internal controls dealing with Keystone Opportunity Grant. The auditors did commend the district for following through with the recommendation from the previous year's audit dealing with the monitoring of the food service change account. No similar findings were noted in this audit. Other highlighting, highlights of the audit dealing with financial aspects of the budget include a fund balance currently sitting at $4,416,553, of which $1,299,988 is committed for capital expenditures, technology, and bus leases. In addition, $352,358 of the total fund balance is non-spendable for inventory and prepaid expenditures, while $147,729 is restricted to special education and local contribution. The remaining unassigned fund balance is $2,618,478, which is approximately 4% of the total budget. The recommended amount of unassigned fund balance should be between 8 and 12%. This is why it's imperative that we continue to stay away from using the fund balance to offset the budget deficit. Other highlights include our district being, having a total bonded debt of $57,245,000. Interbar school district maintained an A-plus credit rating from Standard and Poor's, and the portion of the district that the district owes to Piers is projected to increase from currently 32.57% to 36.32% over the next five years. Finally, the analysis of the 2016-2017 budget showed that the district is doing an excellent job of controlling costs and absolutely not spending money on frivolous items just because the money has been allocated. The 2016-2017 final budget had expenditures, budget, final budget had expenditures of $65,729,542, but the actual expenditures came in at $64,194,704. This is a good thing because not as much money was needed to be taken out of the fund balance to cover that deficit over that fiscal year. Some examples of why it came a little bit less than what was budgeted. The budget reserves of $75,000 for emergencies was not needed. Gasoline and diesel fuel costs were approximately $45,000 less than budgeted. Actual costs for supplies for facilities were approximately $46,000 less than budgeted. Various software and licenses came in under budget. Tuition costs for charter schools and private schools came in $225,000 less than was budgeted, and costs for substitute and overtime payments were approximately $112,000 less than budgeted. So, overall, I was satisfied with the work the administration is doing. There's always ways to create more efficiencies within departments to maintain solid internal controls, but we work, and we will continue to work with the administration to make sure those controls are there. I am concerned with the amount that our fund balance is at, but I believe we, as a board, have realized that the fund balance has been being depleted, and we, last year, were working to make sure that we didn't use any. We're doing the same thing this year as well. Finally, I want to commend the superintendent and directors for their work on the budget. Keeping the actual expenditures under the final budget shows that each one of you are doing your due diligence in controlling the costs and only spending money that is needed to maintain the quality of education for our students. Next steps, Mr. High School will begin filing the audit, and then at next month's meeting, we will hopefully approve the audit, give board members more time, give more time to review if they have any other questions. I know in the last, we had a couple days to review it, and the meeting was tonight, so we didn't want to rush and put it on the agenda for tonight, and we have some time. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chabon, for that, that report there. Thank you. Thank you for your time on this. This is a lot of work that we did sort of, Mr. High School, Ms. Riley, they put a lot of hours in on this. And just so you know, I don't know if Justin said it, but the auditor said that we had the highest opinion that you could get as far as the report, the work that they do. So that's, that's saying so. Okay, moving on, number 10, Mr. Evans.
Under Personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved, starting with ten point one, going to ten point six, on page two and three.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Number 11, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret that the following retirements be approved. Mr. Howard Bailey, bus driver with 14 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 30th, 2018.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Eleven point two, Alan Carducci, head day custodian Norwood School with 18 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective July 6th, 2018.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I should have said this on the last one. Both of these, we love the fact that both were their years of service, 14 years, 18 years, it's a long time. They put a lot of time in. We really appreciate it as a president, as a school district. Hearing no other comments. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, 12.1 through 12.5.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motions 13.1 and 13.2.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 14.1 to 14.3.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, motions 15.1 to 15.3.
Second. Motion's have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion number 16, that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $9,133,557. Interborough School District share is $37,655.41.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Colwell, could we have a roll call?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Phelps, one event. I never seconded. It's a second.
Come back.
Yeah, you went right through that one.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Bernauer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seventeen, that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Technical High Schools for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $13,664,47. Interborough School District share is $1,1,738.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Colwell, is there also a roll call?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Bernauer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion eighteen, that the Board of School Directors approve the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement for 2018-2019. Interborough School District share is $501,589.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Colwell, could we have a roll call in this one, sir?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Bernauer?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion nineteen, that Esther McManam will be approved to participate in the Pennsylvania Notary Training Online Course at a cost of $320 to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty, that the Board of School Directors approve the independent contractor agreement between Interborough School District and Justice Security Solutions LLC for purposes of risk assessment and training related to active threat response and preparedness at a cost not to exceed $5,000 to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Just that in light of all the current events, we need to just continually harden our facilities against that sort of incident and attack, and every, every little incremental change we can make to security or to harden these particular targets is well worth money.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-one, that the Board of School Directors approve the resignation of School Board Director Kelly Boyle, Representative of Norwood Borough Region 5, effective March 26th, 2018.
With regret, I second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment? I just want to thank Mrs. Boyle for her, her service to Interborough School District and the school board. She has played a critical role the last two years with her different projects that she's been hard on and spearheaded, so she will be missed.
Any other comments? Myself, I'd just like to jump on with Mr. Chabon. She was a lot of help in a lot of different situations that we needed her expertise in, and she did burn a lot to the table with the areas that she had expertise in. So we will miss her, and with regret. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-two, that the Board of School Directors approve the second readings of the following policies in the categories of programs and community. 100 Programs, 150 Title I Comparability of Services, 900 Community, 918 Title I Parent and Family Engagement.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty-three, that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions of the following policies in the category of finances. 600 Finances, 610 Purchases Subject to Big Quotation, and 611 Purchases Budgeted.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to all business. Hearing none. Do we have any new business? Hearing none. Moving on to our superintendent, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Interborough's Theater Production of Rogers and Hammerstein Cinderella is opening this evening at the high school. There is a show tomorrow evening at 7:00, and on Saturday, there are two shows, one at 2:00 and one at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are sold at the door. The doors will open a half hour before the show. Cost of the tickets are $10 for adults and $8 for students or senior citizens. There is a nice concession stand, and there are raffle baskets, including a $500 gift card basket. So hopefully, if you're available, make some time to attend the show. I know that the theater group has been working so hard. They've visited the schools, they've performed in front of the students, and I know they're excited to perform for our community, so please attend if you can. On Thursday, April 12th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., the district will be hosting our pre-K literacy fair at the kindergarten academy. All children ages 3 to 5 who are not yet attending the kindergarten academy and reside in the district are invited to attend with a parent or guardian. This year, each family will receive a free copy of My Cousin Momo by Zachariah O'Gora, which is the PA One Book Challenge, excuse me, One Book Every Child selection, and it's specific for students who are at that pre-K age. So please visit the website for more information. As you are all well aware, we have just finished our fourth nor Easter of the winter, and I just want to take an opportunity to commend our maintenance and custodial department. They have done an amazing job under the direction of Mr. Galloway, cleaning our schools, getting our schools ready with the snow, the plowing and the shoveling and salting, and they've worked a lot of hours, but our buildings have been ready to open, our kids have gotten into the buildings safely, so have our students, and, you know, it's very tiring to be out there doing all of that work, but I'm proud of the work that they've done, and they've showed, they have showed the pride that they have in our school and how much they care about our kids and our families. So I just want to say, it's been a long winter, but I really do appreciate the work that they have done. And I would like to also recognize Ms. Boyle. I've gotten to know her well over the last couple years, and she has really been so supportive of not only me, but our administrative team and our schools and the work that we do here. And she has brought a lot of insight coming from higher ed, and I really appreciated the opportunity to work with her, and we will miss her, and I hope that we can find someone who can, who can fill her shoes. And last but not least, I'd like to recognize the two retirees, Howard Bailey and Alan Carducci, and I wish them well in their retirement, and thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Phelps.
I guess, Mr. Chabon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I would just like to commend the Physical Education Department on their hard work holding the district-wide dodgeball tournament. It was a great event to see so many families, staff, and students participating. Also, I, I attended one of the informational sessions on the county-wide reassessment last week with Mrs. Riley. Tyler Technologies presented the timeline for the process and answered many residents' questions about the impact on their taxes. Mrs. Riley and I asked a series of questions on the impact that it would have to school district, both financially and administratively. We spoke with one of the representatives after the meeting and asked if it would be possible to schedule a meeting with them to come talk to local school boards, superintendents, and business managers to get a better grasp on the impact of the reassessment, specifically on school districts. The new assessments will go to effect January 1st, 2021, but just for our planning sake, I think that it's important that we get a, a update or an impact on what it would affect school taxes, because obviously, the local property taxes are a big chunk of our budget. So I appreciate that Mrs. Riley was able to attend, and hopefully, we can schedule something with them to provide an update for us. And finally, just wish all families and staff a restful and relaxing spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Any other comments from the board?
Just real quick, I wanted to just back up on a comment they made about security. I didn't mean to refer to schools as targets, but in the security realm, it's hard targets and soft targets, be it a church, a mall, a school, movie theater, and whatnot, and the whole idea is to push that trouble down the road, and that's how, that's how vague I sees it, and that, so I didn't mean to misspeak in, by any means, the little, our children, or our facilities, or anything else, they're all very, very important to me.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? I just have one, I want to thank Mr. Galloway, he's one of our newest directors, and I want to tell you, he has hit this floor run, and he hasn't stopped. He is doing a phenomenal job, and we just want to thank him for that. Okay, on Monday, April 9th, 2018, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting, the